Yeah, I mean, I drove by and she told me. And she told me that's like.
Not like her being.
I said, we're.
All right, y'all, let's get going. Let's get going.
How are we going?
All right, y'all, let's get going. Let's get going.
How are we going? Thank you, Russell. I don't know.
Good afternoon. We want to welcome all of you here. We're so, so glad that you're able to come back after fourteen months of hiatus. Doing Zoom, we're glad to see all of you here in person. Our invocation and pledge tonight will be done by Councilmember Will Brazington. Because we have to pray ourselves for Councilmember John Dewar. Let me just also advise all of you that our mayor is not here for a wonderful reason. He's becoming a grandfather again as we speak. And we ask for prayers for him as well.
Councilwoman Brazington.
Good. Thank you, Madam Mayor Protam. Good afternoon. Would you please bow your heads with me? Dear Lord, we give thanks today for your many blessings. We express our gratitude for that which we enjoy as a community and ask for your guidance and direction as we seek solutions to better meet the needs of one and all. Help us continue to do your will and our best in our various endeavors so as to ensure Greenville remains a special place to live, work, and to visit. It's in your name we lift this prayer. Amen. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Please be seated.
We have a roll call.
Councilmember Dewarkin.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Brazington.
Here.
Councilmember Stahl.
Here.
Councilmember Dow.
Here.
Mayor White.
We have the approval of the minutes for April the twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes? If not, then those minutes are approved as they are stated. We, anyone have any statements or questions, statements before we begin our process? I do want to have one. As we go through this meeting today, we do not want to forget those who are from the city brim of some of our staff members and some of our residents who have passed on during this pandemic time. And we want to remember them and please keep them in your prayers and their families as well. And also, we want to thank the city staff, the city managers, the city staff for holding up the ship, for doing those things to accommodate, to make things convenient for us as councilmembers. Because it's difficult as it is in order to not meet, but in order to serve the people. So we thank y'all for holding on and keeping things till we could get to this particular point. So now we have a list of people.
Madam Mayor Protam. Yes. Before we proceed, I did want to offer just one thought to council as well as those gathered. So as, as we're all aware at this point, yesterday morning, the peace and serenity within one of our city parks and neighborhoods was unexpectedly taken away on what was otherwise undoubtedly an enjoyable Mother's Day morning. Had the opportunity walking in along with Councilman Dewarkin to speak with our chief of police. And I think that was just another example yesterday, the senseless and tragic killing that occurred right outside of Legacy Park. Another reminder of how fragile life can be. And for me, it's yet another reminder of how thankful we all are, how grateful we are to our police department, those men and women who time and again put themselves in harm's way and actually run through the danger to keep our citizens safe. And that's exactly what I understand transpired yesterday in Hollingsworth Park. So Chief Thompson, to everybody on your team, just in perpetuity, our continued thanks and gratitude, but specifically the two individuals of the police department yesterday who were called to service and helped keep the public safe. And I'd also just like to extend sympathy to the family of, of the victim who was taken away. So thank you for indulging me.
No, thank you for, for reminding us because Mother's Day, we always want to think positive. So we have so much to be thankful for. Is there anyone else?
And one other comment. I just want y'all to know how awesome it is to see y'all after a year of y'all looking at, at my bookcase. And it is really, really nice to be back. So, so thank y'all for, for coming out today.
You actually dressed up for the occasion?
No, I had to, I had to Google how to make, how to tie a tie.
It's been a while. Okay. If there are not any more announcements, et cetera, we have citizens. We have ten citizens who have signed up to, to speak to council tonight. So if you'll please come up, please state your name and your address. And then we'll move forward from that time. You have three minutes and our clerk will be taking, will be timing you. So we appreciate your coming. The first person we have is Ken Miller, our former police chief, who on issue item fifteen A.
Good to see you, Ken.
Good to see you all. Good to see you all. Good evening, Mayor Protam Fleming, Members of City Council, City Manager McDonough. My name is Ken Miller and I live at Two Sundue Court in Greenville. When I last saw Fall, the last Fall's Work Session Presentation to Propose Alarm Ordinance Changes, I was concerned for the downstream impact, impact on public confidence in our police department and in our city government. But I was also concerned about its impact on the alarm industry. That alarm industry has significant local and regional presence, both in ownership, employee base, and its commitment, its commitment not only to Greenville and our surrounding area and our community, but also to local government itself. I wrote Chief Thompson with these concerns and I shared them with Members of City Council. I want to thank you, Mayor Protam, and also Councilmembers Brazington and Dewarkin for spending time with me and allowing me to talk through the issues as I saw them and also to introduce you to Peter Norman, who represented the alarm industry's interests here locally. Because of your attention and direction, the city is charting a path that better balances all interests and I believe is worthy of your affirmative vote. The revised ordinance tightens requirements on both the industry and homeowner or alarm owner, providing enhanced and shared accountabilities that should help relieve the burdens of unnecessary repeated false alarm calls for service. And it accomplishes it without undermining the alarm industry or local alarm holders and without serving the city's organizational interests first. Inclusion, selfless service, and community safety are hallmarks of any effective government. I was fortunate to preside over nearly twenty-eight percent decline in crime, solve generations-old murders, achieve community confidence at extraordinary levels, maintain safety and protect rights in countless, countless demonstrations, and greatly, and I mean greatly, improve officer pay, training, equipment, and policies. And I did none of it alone. I did it with the support of dedicated men and women inside the department, in other city departments, and with city council, and with hand-in-hand with our community every step of the way. I was proud to have served Greenville. I did so faithfully, never once compromising my obligations, oath, ethics, or values in serving our great city. In that same spirit, I thank you for recognizing the importance of balancing multiple stakeholder perspectives in this revision process. Your commitment to inclusion, selfless service, and community safety has, in my opinion, made all the difference and I thank you.
Thank you. Number two, Peter Norman, item fifteen A. Thank you, Mr. Norman. Please state your address.
Thank you. Peter Norman, two Belvort Court, Greenville, South Carolina. And thank you. Again, I'm Peter Norman. I live in Greenville. The company I'm with is Priority One Security. We're based in Greenville. And I'm also a director of the State Electronic Security Association. And I'm in favor of the ordinance. I want you to know, we started meeting with Fran Moore several months ago to modify this ordinance with the spirit of cooperation to come up with the end product that we think works for the city, law enforcement, the end users, and the alarm industry. I feel like we've done it. It's not perfect, but you need to know that we have a pledge and a commitment to meet regularly, to address issues as they arise. And meeting means we'll be meeting with Fran Moore and other companies in the industry. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much, sir. Jessica Saravia. Okay. Please state your address.
One fifteen Atherton Way in Greer. Can you hear me?
Can, can y'all hear her? Could you speak a little bit louder?
One fifteen Atherton Way in Greer.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
And you pronounced my name correctly, so thank you. I spoke with you guys last city council meeting about the wings of city, wings of the city statues and how inappropriate I believe that they are, especially in the public square. It's a place for all of us to be and even we just stood up. And it's not just me who feels this way. I put together a petition like I said. And I'm just trying to make some of the common good of the people who's in here. I can't believe we need to do this. This should have never been put up. It's disgusting that my children have to be exposed to this. This culture for actual people, they would be arrested for indecent exposure. However, because they're sculptures, they're considered wrong. It is not acceptable for public display, especially for children and youths to go. During this reckoning time of COVID, lax belief here those scary pictures of my favorite. This is going too far and goes against the values of most of the people who are in Greenville, South Carolina. Please remove the statue. They are unnecessary. I want to be able to enjoy downtown with my children. This is inappropriate for them to speak. As a native Green Village and a owner of property in the city, I find this speech disgusting. I am embarrassed to take visitors downtown. It is sad that I cannot take my grandchildren to any of the areas where they may be exposed to this revolting display. Our family loves visiting Falls Park and supporting local shops, but will not return to expose my daughters to this. Hoping these statues are removed soon so a family-friendly atmosphere can resume. Nudity does not belong on the streets. I compete my kids out of museums and more healthy business. Choosing something children and old people alike can enjoy. Please choose something children and old people alike can enjoy. This decision is quite disrespectful. Shows how proud of judgment, right and wrong, is getting. I know that the Martin Luther Commission provisions, but I'm not sure if we mean final. But I did see you guys approve of different members supporting me on some of the places. So I know you guys can do something about this and make this a wonderful place for all of us to keep going to because we always be a part of wonderful. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Susannah Saravia, please state your address.
Madam Mayor Protam, before she speaks, to answer your question, Jessica, we did all approve that exhibit unanimously. Everyone here on the council approved it, as, as we did the AIPP members. So I just want to make that clear.
Ms. Saravia, please state your address. Okay. Thank you.
My address is six thirteen Phillips Road, Greer, South Carolina. And on your note, ma'am, I want the wings of the city statues removed from downtown Greenville yesterday. If these values were actual people, they would have been arrested immediately for public indecency. Without our consent, you are exposing us and our children to genitals, other private parts, and general nakedness. Exposing us to nakedness without our consent is sexual harassment. God says, "A little bit of yeast spreads through the whole dough." If we scarcely, if we scarcely display nudity on our streets, people will begin behaving that way too. How are you going to stop that? Maybe this is not your intention, but naked statues or any pornography stimulate problems like prostitution, self-trafficking, lawlessness in our city. I demand respect for the people of the city, county, state of South Carolina, and this nation. I'm asking you to be the leaders you were meant to be and the leaders we deserve. Lead the city with love and not perversion. God says, "To love your neighbor is to act morally right toward any person." The Bible says, "Love does not wrong to others." So love fulfills the requirement of God's love. Read Romans thirteen, please. God exists. Let me tell you, God exists. And we breathe because he gave us life. When we die, we, we will each stand in judgment, giving an account for our own actions. If you don't know God, let today be the day of your salvation. Salvation is the biggest act of love because none of us deserve it, me included. But salvation requires us to repent. Jesus died on the cross to pay for all our sins, including putting those disgusting nude art in our city. So we don't get this, Jesus died so we don't get the payment, the just reward for eternal condemnation. Repent because God has created us for better things. Faith is accompanied with action and without it is dead works. So bring the statues down.
Allison Saravia, please state your address.
Hi, my name is Allison, hello, City Council. My name is Allison Saravia and I live in six thirteen Phillips Road, Greer, South Carolina. I'm here to tell you guys to remove the wings of the city statues immediately. I am someone who highly loves and honors marriage. I'm keeping myself pure for marriage and that a hundred percent includes keeping my eyes pure. I thank God somebody warned me about the statues because if I had gone downtown unknowingly, that would have robbed me from my innocence and you would be responsible. You have no idea how profoundly that would crush my spirit. Do you care at all that you're making hundreds and more people cry bitter tears? You say it's just art, but if an artist were to paint a nude picture of you and place it in the streets of downtown Greenville, would you still hide behind the lie that it's just art? What if they painted a nude picture of your spouse or your son or your daughter? Would you say that's just art? Don't you realize that pornography is the number one problem in our society? It's the reason people don't respect marriage anymore. It's the reason our society moved towards homosexuality and the reason why we are now hearing people endorse pedophilia in places like New York and California where these statues came last from. So once again, I'm telling you to take down these statues, destroy them, and repent because if you don't, God's gonna have to take you guys down.
Okay, please, 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 thank you. Sylvia Palmer. State your name, item nine A.
Good evening, councilmen, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here to speak on item number nine A, the abandonment of the portion of Eleanor Street. My name is Sylvia Palmer. I live at five Roosevelt Avenue in Greenville. I am a property owner and my property is adjacent to the said property in question. Little bit about me and my knowledge of the property and area. I'm a sixty-eight-year resident of Nickel Town. I was a child when Roosevelt Avenue, Roosevelt Heights Apartments were built by Bob Hughes's father. The property in question was intended to have a road to run through that section and eventually homes were to be built on that property. When I received my letter in the mail notifying me about the proposal to abandon the road, there was a map attached to the said papers. And looking at the map closely, it clearly indicates that at some point someone had already pre-measured property distances along both sides of that proposed road. And I counted a total of twelve possible houses that could have been built on that site. I'm neither here today to condone or to talk against because I'm tossed between the two right now because we have not been formally presented with any plans regarding the proposed development. But I know, doing research, that Greenville Housing Fund is the new owner of said property. And knowing a little bit about them and the need for affordable housing in the city of Greenville and the fact that this land has never been. Greenville, and the fact that this land has never been developed, makes it a prime candidate for affordable housing. I'm also a past president of the Nickel Town Neighborhood Association, and one of our deep concerns was to make sure that we provided housing for the middle and low-income people if they choose to purchase property and/or buy a house in the community. My concerns right now are what type of development that's going to be there, whether it's apartments or single-family homes. I'm also concerned that if the road is abandoned, as previously was planned, how is a developer gonna enter that property since it's landlocked on three sides? And another concern is whether there's gonna be a cul-de-sac entering from one of those proposed already Eleanor Street entrances. Stormwater runoff, there's nothing there, and there are neighbors on my street who are having problems with stormwater runoff as we speak. We also have a habitat of wild animals that live in the woods adjacent to the homeowners on the lower end of the street, and they already have possums, raccoons, skunks, and snakes as visitors in their backyards and on their property. So when excavation occurs, these animals are gonna go wherever, and we are the first property owners that they probably will visit because we exist between the woods on one side and Cleveland Parks Woods on the other. I would ask that the property developer take a look at the Nickel Town Neighborhood Association Master Plan to get some ideas on the types of dwellings, and we also are concerned that we want to be informed of any future plans for the development, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you so much, and hopefully the Housing Fund was listening, and hopefully you can get some answers to your questions. Thank you so very much. I appreciate that.
And Sylvia, thank you. Thank you for your service, not only to the neighborhood, but also as part, a major part of GBL 2040. Thank you.
If you'll state your address, Dr. Cobb.
Okay, can you hear me?
A little bit louder.
My name is Ken Cobb, and I live in the city of Greenville at 17 Casey Street. I am the Chair of the Sociology Department at Furman University, and I have been conducting research in the Southern Side and West Greenville neighborhoods for the past nine years. I'd like to share with you some data about those neighborhoods and the demographic changes that have been taking place in them over the past decade to help you make decisions about development, zoning, and maintaining their historical character. The data I present is from the American Community Survey, five-year estimates collected by the U.S. Census Bureau. Southern Side and West Greenville have experienced widespread displacement of the black population since 2010. In 2010, black residents in Southern Side and West Greenville comprised 80% of the neighborhood. In 2019, that number dropped to 51%. The newcomers of these neighborhoods are disproportionately more wealthy than the longtime residents. In 2010, households in Southern Side and West Greenville earning over $100,000 a year comprised roughly 3% of the population. In 2019, that number rose to 34% of the population. These figures are adjusted for inflation and in 2019 dollars. The influx of wealthy residents has warped traditionally sound measurements of economic well-being in the area. The median household income, an important figure because it is often used as the base by which we calculate affordable housing, would appear to be rising throughout these neighborhoods. In 2010, the median household income of West Greenville and Southern Side was roughly $19,000 a year. In 2019, it rose to $36,000 a year. Again, these are in 2019 dollars. And for context, in 2019, the city of Greenville median household income was $56,000. However, the median household income for Southern Side and West Greenville hides the racial inequality behind the statistic. In 2019, median household income in Southern Side and West Greenville for white households was $74,000 a year, while for black households it was $23,000 a year. This is particularly important because it means that the median household income for black residents in West Greenville and Southern Side is less than half that of the median household income of the city as a whole. Because of lower household incomes, many black families in Southern Side and West Greenville are priced out of homeownership. Yet rents are also rising at a rapid pace, even when adjusted for inflation. Between 2010 and 2019, rents rose 25% higher than the rate of inflation. This is consequential because 74.4% of housing units in Southern Side and West Greenville are renter-occupied. If left to its own devices, the private real estate market will slowly displace current black residents from being able to afford to live in Southern Side and West Greenville. This process is well underway in West Greenville, no longer a black-majority neighborhood for the first time since the U.S. Census started collecting neighborhood-level data, and based on current trends, Southern Side will no longer be a minority-majority neighborhood by 2025.
Thank you so much, Dr. Cobb, and hopefully we'll get an opportunity to talk to you at a later date, more information, because your information is quite accurate and quite true, and we'd be more than happy to, the city manager and staff, please, we need to get together so we can share some more information because as we do our land management ordinance, we need to have all the data that we need in order to do what's necessary. Thank you so much, and I appreciate all the work that you've done for our communities.
Very quickly, I submit that those same numbers are probably true for the other minority neighborhoods in the city as well. So to the extent that we can have that conversation about all of them, I would greatly, greatly appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Cobb, do you have this in presentation form at this point?
Yeah, I can email that.
That would be great. And maybe, Mr. Manager, we can schedule a work session to... You really can't do this justice in three minutes.
That's right.
I'm happy to help in any way.
And if you get with Shannon Lavery, Shannon, raise your hand. And we can set that up, all right? Thank you so much, Dr. Cobb. Afia Wengaza, please give your address.
I'm taxpayer Afia Wengaza, living at 202 Lavinia Avenue. I had a great debate with myself about coming here, especially after I heard about the outcome of the moratorium. I thought, well, wow, when I heard that you had even come up, the question had even arose that that was some evidence of sensitivity, development, maturity, but I see that I was wrong. I've been watching the development of Greenville for over 40 years and the misrepresentations that have come with that development, going from the uses of the UDAG grants and the creation of the Hyatt Hotel, the inhumane destruction and displacement of senior citizens on McBee, the lie about the surveillance cameras, and now we all live under them anywhere we go, the public destruction of public housing under the guise of the desirability of low-impact housing. Now you can't spit from one apartment without hitting another one. Greenville is not now, nor has it ever been, a livable place for black people, and it continues to deteriorate. We are distracted by the Lady Bountifuls and other village missionaries, while their spouses and counterparts gut black futures. To quote from Russell Stahl, "With smart, intentional, and sustainable growth, using deliberate and intentional methods." The police continue to receive a disproportionate percentage of the budget, requiring, despite this year, as it's called, of racial reckoning, the need for a redefinition of safety, a framework that dismantles the militarized, modern-day slave-catcher culture that passes for policing and deprives human services of the resources that are, in fact, necessary to make us safe, since it is we who make each other safe and not police. Black art and accolades are no substitute for the ethnic cleansing that ravages our communities and euphemistically referred to as gentrification, that guts the political power and the future of black people. To add insult to injury, not one piece of public art in Greenville about black people has been done by a black artist. The city's use of fancy demographic and financial accounting with creative public relations smacks of the racist, white supremacist planning that is characteristic of the city and county of Greenville, and we will not stand.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Please state your address.
My address is 118 East Belvedere Road. Has nothing to do with what I was signed up to speak about, but y'all better not bring down that statue because you decided to bow to the whims of homophobia and bigotry. That's not who we are as a city. I think if there's anything that you guys need to repent of, it's how let our neighborhoods be gentrified with reckless abandon. I think it's the bigger sin, or the only sin that's being mentioned here tonight. Most of you know I grew up in West Greenville. My family's lived in West Greenville since the 1910s until 2020, where no one in my family could afford to live there. When Knott Swite became mayor of Greenville, the percentage of black people who lived in the city was about 40%. Now that number hovers around 25, based on the city's own numbers. Most of that erasure, for lack of a better term, has been done in districts 2 and 3, represented by Councilwoman Fleming and Councilman Ken Gibson. And it is atrocious. Two weeks ago, you all decided to vote against a moratorium on development in this city until we figured out how we could stop the gentrification, the erasure of our communities. Councilwoman Fleming voted for it. Councilman Gibson voted for it. Councilwoman Dow. But the people who voted against that moratorium were four affluent white guys who aren't a part of these communities. We need to do better because, very frankly, Greenville is becoming a city of the haves and the have-nots until we finish pushing the have-nots out. We need to invest as much in affordable housing as we do into Unity Park. We need to be able to sing our praises and accolades for what we do for the disenfranchised and the bereaved, as much as what we tout in the Wall Street Journal today when we talk about us being at the economic forefront of recovery after the pandemic. We all need to do better. We have real issues. We have real problems. Greenville is not a place where there's equity in our growth. Greenville is not a place where all are treated equal by all of you, by our city, and how our resources are allocated, and how we have the opportunity to pull ourselves up by our bootstraps, because what you guys fail to realize time and time and time again is that there are many in our city who don't have boots to pull themselves up by. I'm not going to take the rest of my time, but we need to reconsider this moratorium that you guys voted down two weeks ago because it is the only necessary measure, in my opinion, that needs to be implemented until you guys can figure out what's going on and stop the gentrification of West Greenville, Nickel Town, Southern Side, and others of our black communities that we value so much. Thanks.
Thank you. Please state your address.
620 Rutherford Street. First of all, the Greenville Democratic Black Caucus would like to commend councilmembers and staff for working with a sense of urgency to address the needs to protect neighborhoods through amendments to the redevelopment ordinance. I look forward to seeing that when it comes forward. I particularly want to thank councilmembers Brock Fleming, Gibson, and Dow in leading this fight. You made everyone aware that you mean business when you say protecting neighborhoods is a priority. I wanted to also acknowledge the bipartisan effort and spirit to address the issue. Councilmember, the work, and we see your efforts to understand the issue and address neighborhoods and their protection. We as the Black Caucus want to see this bipartisan effort extend beyond these zoning solutions to a broader protecting neighborhoods agenda. We heard the dire stats and data from the Furman professor about Southern Side. We also heard from the former president of Nickel Town testify that these needs are also needed in their neighborhood, that they're feeling the same impacts. We heard Mama Afia's poetic reflection of gentrification and its cultural and economic devastation on historic black communities and how they reflect the fear and nightmares of residents across this city. We're hoping that the protection neighborhood agenda would extend to homeownership. We need to focus on homeownership as that is the way that we're going to help people who have been longtime residents in communities stay in communities. We also hope that this protection neighborhoods agenda would extend to African-American economic development, looking at the spending of the city, evaluating how the city is spending money with minority vendors, evaluating any current policies, seeing where they're lacking, monitoring, making those reports to council and to the community. Looking at stimulus funds, I commend the city for, in their first round, how they focused on small businesses and minority businesses. Let's look at that. Let's evaluate that. Let's monitor that and see how impactful that was. Did the money get to the small businesses in the African-American communities that were discriminated against in the PPP distribution? Let's evaluate. Let's see how we can protect communities and neighborhoods from holistic viewpoint. Thank you, and continue to see the work that you do.
Thank you so much. And that is our last signed-up speaker this evening, so we'll move to our next item on the agenda. We have a public hearing on a proposed abandonment of a portion of Eleanor Street, item AB-1-2021. Clint, okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Protam, Members of Council, pleasure to be here tonight. This agenda item is to receive public comment for the proposed abandonment of a portion. It's an unimproved portion of Eleanor Street. It's in the Nickel Town community Roosevelt Heights subdivision. The petition was submitted to the city from the Greenville Housing Fund. The petition is to abandon what we call an unimproved portion of the right-of-way of Eleanor Street. The right-of-way appears to have been established in 1950 with the Roosevelt Heights subdivision. Portions of the road were constructed on each end where it connects to Roosevelt Street and Nickel Street, but the middle portion that you see in the drawing there highlighted in red was never constructed. It was plotted to be a road. Looks like it was intended to be constructed at one time, but just never followed through with the construction. Greenville Housing Fund does own both parcels on either side of that, and they wish to abandon that unimproved portion of the right-of-way.
Okay. Anybody have any comments, a question? And I hope you heard Ms. Palmer when those questions, and I'm sure at a later date, those questions would be answered by the Housing Fund, et cetera. Anybody have any... Are there any people who are opposed, and any people who support the abandonment? I think, Ms. Palmer, you said you hadn't made a decision yet, so, okay. Is there anyone who is in support of this particular abandonment? During public hearings, we get people to say pro or con. We have one, we have two coming. Okay. All right.
I believe we have the president of the Greenville Housing Fund. He'll probably want to say a few words about this.
Okay. All right, keep in mind, we have a three-minute time. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Well, I wanted to introduce my colleague, Aaron Conley, to brief you on this. And essentially, Greenville Housing Fund wants to abandon the easement so we can actually plan the site in consultation with the neighborhood. It's hard to know what we can do, you know, if there's an easement on the site. We can't really fully maximize the utilization of the land, but I'm gonna let Aaron Conley, who's on my But I'm going to let Aaron Conley, who's on my team, brief you a little bit further.
All right, Aaron, go ahead.
Thank you. Just mindful of time here. This is really a title issue. So you all, the City of Greenville, deeded us this 3.24 acres.
Okay.
I noticed that there were some discrepancies between the deed and what was on the county's GIS website, which also showed this highlight of this road. I contacted Mr. Link, asked him, do you all have any current easements showing up in any of your active easements on the property? Which he responded to me, I believe, correct, no. And so I then contacted our attorney, Mr. Bo Campbell at the Horton Firm, who talked to Mr. Pitts, and together they said, no, we need to get this cleaned up. And so that's why we made this petition here before you all, to go ahead and abandon the road easement so that we can then begin to plan and go through the planning process with the Neighborhood Association, and you all in council, and the Planning Commission to figure out what would be the best way to put this land in the service of affordable housing, the citizens of Greenville.
All right, well, we appreciate that. Anyone else in support? Anyone oppose the abandonment? Okay, Councilman Gibson.
I have a question for Brian.
Go right ahead.
Is he hiding? Is Brian hiding behind the curtain there?
No, he is over in the corner, trying not to be in front of the other people.
It's like the wizard, all of a sudden he disappeared. Can y'all tell me, Sylvia, what's your address again? What number you on? Okay.
Roosevelt.
Brian or Aaron, right now, that whole site, is it wooded? It's all dirt?
Some trees.
Okay, and Sylvia's downhill from a lot of it, I think. Well, more like 21 through 25. I'm going to reiterate what she said, two things. Stormwater, stormwater, stormwater. Do not flood those people on Roosevelt, or we will hear about it. The other thing is, that master plan, the 2002, 2002, I can't emphasize enough how often we hear that, right, Councilmember Gibson? The pride of that master plan in that community, and don't be deterred by the age on it. It's very much a living document solidified in that neighborhood, so please respect it. I know you will, Brian, because you know who will come after you if you don't. So just want to reiterate those two points in particular that she said, very, very important for this neighborhood. We're excited about this. Could be a lot of great new work done in there. So thank you all for working on it.
Well, and just, you know, your points well taken. I mean, in addition to the topography, I'm sure you're aware that we have a sort of a crisis in escalating costs in the building trades at the moment. And so obviously, one, you know, potential solution to affordability is density, and I think we, I'm not, you know, we want to get that right, and we want to make sure that it's a neighborhood scale and that it comports with the existing neighborhood. And as you pointed out, in the existing master plan, but I think essentially, if we don't have a street going through, we have some flexibility to really look at the topography challenges the site presents and the surrounding area, and plan something that everyone can support, you know, but if the easement's in place, it just limits us further. And I think that the delivery of the affordable housing that might otherwise go there would be impacted in a negative way that I don't think any of us want, so.
Okay.
And just clarify that, or just to reiterate that, you know, I'm hoping that if this thing goes through, it gives you the flexibility to do that, and it's going to be really, really important to meet with the Neighborhood Association. And anybody who has dealt with Nickel Town Neighborhood Association knows, it is a very active neighborhood association. They have a lot of great ideas, a lot of very active people. And as Councilmember Dow said, a lot of work went into that neighborhood plan. And the same people who are in that Neighborhood Association now are the same people who put the work into that plan, so it is going to come up. So I would, you know, suggest for you, and I know you will, because, you know, you're always on the ball, Brian, that you, you know, consult that plan so you know what you're looking at going in.
Yes, sir. You know, we're very excited about the opportunity the site represents. It's, I mean, I think it's a fabulous location. It's in, you know, just a great part of Nickel Town. As you all may know, we are already supporting investments in affordable homeownership in Nickel Town. And so our ability to contribute more affordable housing in this location, and, you know, what it represents for the larger city, but more specifically for this community, is something we take very seriously. So please hear that from me.
I appreciate that.
Anyone else? I do want to say that I really appreciate the fact that you, that y'all have your hands on this, because with that neighborhood, this could be a nightmare if it was someone else came in to do that. So we do appreciate that, and we look forward to great things.
Oh, thank you. We will deliver.
No pressure, Aaron.
No pressure. We understand that. Trust me, with Sylvia sitting over there, we know, no pressure.
Sylvia, keep me together.
Thank y'all so much. I appreciate that. We will move on to our next item on the agenda, which is item 15, New Business. Our ordinance first reading, ordinance 15A.
An ordinance to amend Article II Burglars in Chapter 21 miscellaneous provisions of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Greenville to reduce the number of no-charge false alarms, add enhanced verification alarm requirement in some circumstances, and matters related thereto.
Move to approve.
Second. It's been moved and properly second. Any questions, objections, or anything like that? And the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
And Mayor Protem Fleming?
Aye.
Willing, can I make a quick comment? I said this at the workshop, but I think it publicly needs to be said, that I want to thank Fran Moore for all the work she put in to put this together, as well as the voices she heard. She worked really hard to make sure that all the parties were listened to. So thank you, Fran, for, I don't see you, but there you are. But thank you for all the work and time, and your staff put into this. Concur.
Thank you. Anyone else? Item 15B.
An ordinance to convey surplus city property located on Woodside Avenue and Woodlawn Avenue to Genesis Homes for purposes of affordable housing.
So moved.
It's been moved and second. Any questions? If not, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Aye. 15A passes. Item 15C.
An ordinance to appropriate $3,638,380 in the Capital Projects Fund to recognize additional resources available for the Unity Park project.
Is there motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any comments, questions? The clerk will call the roll for item 15C.
Councilmember DeWorke?
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson?
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington?
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl?
Aye.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Aye. Item 15C passes. Item 15D, if there's no objection, will be moved to another agenda at a later date. Item six, New Business. Item 16A, Resolutions First and Final Reading. Item 16A.
A resolution authorizing the city manager and the city attorney to take all necessary action to make the city of Greenville a part of a lawsuit seeking recovery of unpaid local accommodations and business license taxes with respect to short-term rentals and matters related thereto.
Make to approve.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and second. All those in favor of item 16A resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, item 16A passes. Item 16B.
A resolution to approve a development agreement between the city and Big Al LLC in furtherance of public improvements on Pendleton Street and matters related thereto.
Is there a motion? Okay, it's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? If not, clerk, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone oppose? Okay. Now we're at this particular point, by city manager, our staff report. And before you begin that, I want to officially announce that our mayor is a grandfather again, a little boy.
Did he name it Ken, John, Russell, or Will?
No.
Did he name it Dorothy?
We're not offering, it's a little boy. We're not offering, they can name their own baby. They did really good. But the mother and the child are doing very, very well. We know the mayor's upset, but I'm just saying, hey, he's just a granddaddy, so let him go. All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you. In addition to the mayor's big event, there were also a number of events that happened in our city over the past week. The first was opening night of the Greenville Drive. Saw a number of council members there. We had a good time. It was a good outing. And at the event, we had a couple of our own first responders, people on the front lines that were recognized. Francis Crosby of the Greenville Fire Department, and Claudia Major, who both worked really hard during COVID. They were recognized for their efforts on behalf of the city and our community, so I want to thank both of them for that, and they got a nice round of applause at the game. Artistry was this past weekend, kicked off on Thursday night, had over 20,000 attendees, even though it was scaled down, and over 100 artists, and many of them reported that they experienced record sales. So congratulations to them, and congratulations to the community for supporting them. And our restaurants and shops also reported that they had a large number of customers during the event. So good news, as people start to come out of COVID, vaccinations are up, and like we are out tonight, people, I think, have a real appetite to get back out and enjoy our great city. Saturday market opened on May the 1st, over 4,600 attendees, absolutely packed, and numerous vendors sold out with record-breaking sales reported. So congratulations to the market and everyone that had a hand in making that event successful. Update on Bobby Pierce Community Center, we've been talking about that one for quite some time. The walls have been framed, the exterior of the building has been painted, and they have poured the retaining walls, so it's well on its way. I know the community's looking forward to that facility opening back up.
Can someone make sure they send us a little picture of that? Because that would be very helpful, because we've been talking about that for a long time.
We can do that. We'll ask to include that in the weekly review this week.
Just whenever you get a chance, if they take a picture of it, send it to us. Thank you.
Our zoo also had their annual 5K event, was hosted by the Greenville Zoo Foundation. The proceeds will go to support future projects at the zoo, so congratulations to them for that. Do want to let the community and council know about a really important meeting that's coming up. There's been a lot of effort working with homeless coordination, our homeless providers in the city, the Upstate Homeless Coalition, I and a number of other members of the senior staff, Eden Freeman and our police chief, have been actively involved in those discussions over the past several months, all leading up to a couple of meetings that will happen on May the 18th. One session will be at 9:00 AM, the second at 5:30. There will be a panel to talk about the issue of homelessness, so we encourage you all to come out, and we encourage the community to participate. A lot of good work.
I do want to say that there was a homeless panel discussion, and one of our county council members and I, we're, I'm hoping they will move forward, that homelessness does not care where you live. And so we're looking at if the county and all the other five cities, if all six, all of us can get together, we can make, it could be a much more meaningful impact on that. So we appreciate we're having those meetings.
Also, a number of significant planning efforts are underway right now. Our infill committee continues to work with our staff, meeting with the Home Builders Association and the Realtors Association to discuss and receive feedback on a number of land management ordinance text amendments that have gone to Planning Commission and will come back to council, I believe, in June. So those will be back before you relatively soon for your consideration. As far as long-range planning goes, the Village of West Greenville micro-plan is underway.
Mr. Manager, receiving information back on that. As well as the West End Master Small Area Plan.
So we've been working hard on a virtual feedback wall that's open, it's advertised, it's on our social media platforms. Jump in, John.
Mr. Manager, I just want to say thank you to the citizens that are involved in that infill task force. Good grief, those people are working hard.
Continue to work hard.
Coming up on a year.
Holy cow, I mean, they, from the number of emails we get from those committee members and the hours they spend on that, really appreciate the involvement of the citizens.
It's a complex number of issues that they're working with, with staff on to come up with some solutions to better protect the neighborhood.
And kudos to staff, too. I know they're working very hard on that as well.
Unity Park continues to progress. Harper has completed the asphalt paving in front of the common, so if you've been out there recently, you've noticed that the fencing has come down in that area. It's been open to the public, and they have now moved their attention towards the area back on the visitor's center side. Installation of the border tow on the south side of the Reedy has been completed. If you've been out there, you can really see a difference. You can actually see the Reedy River now out there, really looks great. And the visitor's center construction continues to move along. I had a chance to go out last week, the sheet rock is going up. You can really get a sense of what that room is going to look like out there, and what that facility is going to do for the neighborhood and the community, so we're excited about that. And those are some of the highlights from the city the past couple of weeks.
Ooh, that was pretty good. I like that.
And the river does look great.
Oh, yes.
Looks really good.
That's wonderful. Any other comments, et cetera? We want to thank all of you who came to address us or came to sit in, and we appreciate all of your support, particularly our staff. We thank you for what you continue to do each day. And I didn't expect us to be here on a high-mounted facility, but you did a great job, and hopefully everybody can see, and we move forward with that. Continue to stay safe and be blessed, and think about the mayor. Excuse me, think about his daughter. And the baby. Yes, she's the one with the, yeah.
Are we, we're...
30, adjourned, 6:30.
We officially adjourned.